Get those. Actually have to communicate. Staff ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, ten oh one. Welcome to the May eleventh, Tuesday, May the eleventh, although it may not seem like May outside today. We're rapidly moving through two thousand twenty-one, aren't we? Want to welcome you to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Dennison. Our first order of business today is gonna be to call, call the order. Roll call.
Hello, sorry.
Sorry, that's my bad.
Uh, Redwine?
Here.
Sure.
Here.
Karen?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
No more.
Have a floor, thank you. Uh, little housekeeping before we get too far into the meetings this morning. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body, so all cases with the exception of Platts and site plans, which our decision on those is final, will be passed on to City Council for final approval. And I believe that will be on May the seventeenth, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so items today that are not site plans and Platts will be placed on that agenda for final approval. Looks like everything on our agenda today is a public hearing. We're going to pass on the approval of the minutes since we don't have the drafts completed as of yet. Fanchions out, uh, rules, so we will adopt those, approve those in our next meeting, uh, first, uh, second. Okay, everything on the agenda today is a public hearing, so we're gonna give you the opportunity to come forward. I need you to state your name and your address for the record, please. We have a three-minute time limit on, uh, on speakers. And we'll use our discretion if we feel like you need more than three minutes, we will, we will grant that to you. That being said, uh, first order of business will be item three A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, everyone. This is item three A, receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of the Hyde Park Apartment Edition located at twenty-seven twenty-seven Loy Lake Road. Case number two thousand twenty-one dash zero five zero RP. If you think back to our last meeting, the site plan and landscape plan of the proposed development was approved. There were a few things that needed to be cleaned up on the replat, however, so now it's before you today to be acted upon. The replat does a couple of things for us. It allows for access easement as well as utility and fire lane easements. Oh, and here's the zoning, it is zone multifamily two. The plat also creates a separate lot, Lot Three R, which will be zoned, or currently zoned, as SF seven point five. So I'm present for any questions that you may have, and city staff recommends approval.
Any questions, staff? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? All right, seeing none on either side, I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion among the commission? All right, Chair, let me take a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat Hyde Park Apartment Edition Phase Two.
All in favor? I oppose, none, motion carries. Okay, item three B.
Item three B, receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to rezone two lots. Property ID number twenty-one eighty twelve and twenty-six six zero three six along High Point Circle and Highland Drive to a planned development zoning district. This is case number two thousand twenty-one dash zero five two Z. Here is the aerial, aerial of the subject properties, outlined in yellow, along High Point Circle, and then you have Highland Drive also running east to west, this is just west of seventy-five. And here is the current zoning. So most everything around seventy-five on this little corridor north of Morton's gonna be mostly zone ag, except for this pocket here, which is predominantly zoned local retail. This is the proposed planned development, this is the concept plan. This concept plan, which will be included in the PD, I'm sorry, is included in the PD, consists of approximately, I'm sorry, one hundred and twenty-four apartment units with a density of twenty dwelling units per acre. The comprehensive plan does allow for multifamily in some areas along the US seventy-five corridor and our, our areas designated as neighborhood. We also have, um, what you see in this concept plan, and if you dig into the PD a little bit, you'll see that this actually exceeds our minimum landscape requirements by requiring a fifteen-foot wide landscape easement for any development along High Point Circle and High Point Drive with shade trees planted thirty feet on center. So again, this is a multifamily planned development. Just to clarify, the PD outlines, um, some requirements, but defers back to the actual base zoning of multifamily two. Since this was inserted and passed out on the agenda, our legal team has kind of touched it up a little bit and clarified that in more detail, that will be in the final version that goes to City Council. So I'm present for any questions that you may have. The applicant is also here, and we did receive one letter of opposition from one of the property owners. Received this yesterday, if not, I would have included this in your packet. It seems to me that they are concerned about increased theft or vandalism from the nearby properties, as well as a concern of, um, they're occupying or, or operating, rather, a hotel, and they were hoping to have some of their occupancy driven by future commercial or retail units.
Okay, any questions, staff? Okay, seeing none. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Don D'Amico, Salona, Texas, I'm the applicant. I think, uh, we approach this as being a good corporate citizen. We put a good product on the ground and it's well managed. It's in everyone's best interest if we keep it clean and well-run. That's what our aim is to do, we do that, and we've done that in the past. In terms of the objection from the hotel owner, I would throw out one thought. Retail back there, the whole reason that we were able to do this, or feel we can do this, retail's a bit removed, it's not directly on one-twenty, which obviously would make it more convenient. And I would suggest one other thing. I know everybody here probably goes to Walmart at one time or another, the Dollar Store, or grocery shopping, or whatever. It's doubtful you plan to rent a hotel room and you go to Walmart. I did, uh, I'm not sure I see the correlation, you know, we're gonna stay overnight and shop. You know, that's marginal. So the idea that people would be living there, you've got access to services, goods and services. If anything, when people come to visit some of the residents, they may stay at the hotels. There may be a positive aspect there, I don't know, but it's possible. I think it's just as possible as though, as if there were some sort of small retail stores there. I don't see that generating a lot of their business. Anyway, that's it, thank you for the consideration, I've...
Any questions of our speaker?
Any, no?
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else to speak, I have one more card here, I think. Michael?
Good morning, my name's Michael Costelli, I'm a resident of Dennison, Texas. Also, uh, part of the group that owns the adjacent property to the west. There's, we're not, we're not totally opposed to this project, but we want some things to be considered as, as it develops. So the west line, there is actually the city limit, county limit line. So when we get into putting a high, high-dense population in that area, we run into some issues with the county also. Since we own property on Highland Drive, plus I've lived down Highland Drive, we've noticed over the, uh, last couple of years since the Parkdale Villa addition was put in, that there's more activity up and down Highland Drive. Highland Drive is a cut-through, basically, from seventy-five out to eighty-four, so it feeds the traffic out to Eisenhower State Park and out to Grand Pappy, and we see a lot of, uh, traffic moving that way. So I would anticipate that this would create even more traffic. The speed limit on Highland Drive is thirty-five miles an hour. It's rarely abided by. Cars go down Highland Drive in excess of fifty miles an hour. We have a lot of residents that use Highland Drive as a place to exercise, walk, ride bikes, things like that. And I'm sure you guys are familiar with that road. It's not suitable for that kind of activity. And so with putting that much population there, I would imagine that these residents will use Highland Drive as, for that purpose, to exercise, to walk down, because it is a nice road to do that on. But there are some risk and safety risks there that I want you guys to consider. In addition to that, um, as far as jurisdiction on who, if it's a sheriff call, or it's gonna be Dennison PD, and those things are gonna be a consideration also, since we're on that, that line. As far as the property owner and our interest with our livestock and our recreation on our property, you know, we just wanna make sure that the proper fencing or screenings put up to separate and protect our asset from this. And in addition to prevent, you know, just curious youngsters and people accessing our property and using our property, we just wanna make sure that those things are taken into consideration. In addition to, as the city continues to grow, I would imagine that our property will be viewed as something for development in the future. And so whatever's put there, we wanna make sure that if, if, uh, if this multi-use structure isn't going to impede on us possibly having single-family development there at some point, so I would ask that consideration be on the height. I haven't seen the, the elevation plans of this structure, if it's two-story, four-story, but I'd ask for consideration there. Thank you.
Any questions, speaker?
Your, your property, Mr. Costelli, is right here, you talking about?
Yes.
Not, not your home where you live?
No, the home, the home's further down, so that's, that's one track out of three tracks that we own. It's a total of eighty-five acres that we run our livestock on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? I mean, we're, we're in opposition at this point. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Yes, sir. Yes, absolutely. Name and address for the record, please.
Sir, my name is Rob Jane, I am one of the owners for one of the hotels, the La Quinta Inn. It's the one, um, on the right side of the... Uh, and, um, as you mentioned, uh, we are the, we received the email from us yesterday. So the reason for opposition is, I mean, we're not totally opposite, but, uh, we would like to get things in the city. We, we want, you know, we want the city to get beautified and, you know, develop better. But, uh, like, uh, the gentleman just said, um, the roads are not meant to take that much traffic. With one-twenty-four dwelling units coming in, uh, we're gonna get more traffic. And more traffic means more accidents, more prone to, uh, and with the hotel guests, we're already having a hard time getting them into the property, 'cause, uh, there are three hotels in that neighborhood, and the access is very hard for the hotel guests to come in. So I don't know if the city is gonna be doing something for the access to make the roads much better, 'cause the roads are so narrow already, so, um, that's number one. And then a hotel guest, if you're a hotel guest, I understand they're here for one night or two nights, or whatever nights, they don't like to go retail or shopping, but they also don't want the vandalism or theft. That's number one concern that a hotel guest thinks when they're staying in a hotel. When, if you're a hotel guest, and if you see people walking by trespassing, that's the number one, they don't wanna stay there. We've owned a hotel before, and if there are residents in place of hotel, number one thing is theft. Anytime a guest comes in, they ask, "Do you have theft here?" Right now, we say, "No." If we're gonna have one hundred and twenty-four units, people's gonna be walking by, in and out. So that's another thing to consider, the theft for, for the, all the hotels around. Right now, we have a, we do have theft ratio, but it's very low, so we wanna keep that in mind as well. So, um, and then another thing, if we do consider, we wanna know what kind of boundary while they're gonna be proposing from our land to there, that way we have protection on our land. So that is all.
Any questions, speaker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Webb, a question for you. What's the proposed car traffic count that this will produce on a daily basis?
With a hundred and twenty units, it's actually, this is what I would not consider very high-density development. I think if we were in the, the three-hundred range, I think that would probably create the daily trip volumes that might be a concern. But, uh, given the hundred and twenty units of development, I don't think that there'd be any peak, any peak period that there'd be any problem on the intersections or on the roads itself.
All right, let me ask you another question. It's right now is on local retail. So when we compare the two, the two uses, what's the difference between traffic count for local retail versus what we see on this unit?
They built out to the maximum capacity for the FAR for the local retail, it would be significantly higher traffic volumes and higher peak, peak volumes.
Okay.
One of the reasons, staff, we, you know, we, we certainly look at any question of multifamily very carefully in the City of Dennison. One thing we look at is, uh, what's the problem with current zoning? What, what is it that it can't develop? And speaking with the, uh, Economic Development Corporation, uh, and looking at the site, it's very obvious that, uh, these sites are probably not retail areas that, uh, retail are going to, it has very limited visibility. They want to be on the high-visibility corridor, so we always look for that but for. And if it's not retail, then, then what would be the next use? Certainly, we don't think probably single-family neighborhood could be retrofitted in there. Does not seem to be an office market, and then any time near future, that would be the fallback, is, you know, some low-density offices. And, uh, that market doesn't seem to be in this part of Dennison for quite some time, so... I believe, given the standards that have been written into the PD ordinance, staff, the staff are very comfortable with this, with this main use.
I've got a question too, along the same lines, it's just from a practical point of view, knowing that area, uh, the people that are going to be in this development, if they are trying to go leave the development, say, go to Walmart, their easiest route is gonna be through that strip mall and leave, which is a little bit problematic, has that been considered, and any solution for that?
Yeah, I think there's a numbers point as far as origin destination, it depends on, you know, where they want to go, whether they're leaving for work and wanna go to seventy-five, or if they wanna go to a, a local business. So I think there's enough, enough different access points, and it's not gonna create a problem in any one street.
Don, could you come back to the voting, please? My question for you, and I think some of the other commissioners have voiced the same thing. Would you address your screening and fencing that you're, that you're proposing on this project?
Yeah, what, eh, well, first of all, the whole property would be wrapped, which we do as a matter of course, anyway. Now, there's a question whether we do it with wrought iron, or do it with a combination of brick and block and wrought iron, stone, that kind of thing. You've seen a lot of that with subdivisions and variations along that line, so it can be a combination of all that material. That's basically what we're talking about, so that there would be privacy, so there wouldn't be bleed over into adjoining properties. And one of the things that I, I need to stress, management is critical. It's in everyone's best interest if we manage properly. It's, I don't wanna shoot myself in the foot. This is, this will be, uh, a large investment for us. We want it to succeed, which means we have to be a good neighbor, we have to be a good citizen of the community. It's, it's, it's just, it's counterproductive to think we're gonna let it go downhill for the sake of maybe a couple of bucks, that doesn't make any sense. On a long, we look at things long-term, and from a long-term status, it needs to work, it needs to be kept maintained, it needs to be kept clean. We need to screen applications, which we do as a matter of course. But this is what we're talking about, I'm not talking about turning, turn, turning it into an instant slump, that's not the point here.
That's my next question, what's your estimated proposed rental rate per square foot on this, on this project?
I think you're looking at somewhere between a dollar thirty-five and a dollar fifty, that's what I think. Now, we've shopped a variety of the other complexes, and we know that several are building and have started construction.
Well, I think that answer right there pretty details what kind of project we're doing.
Yeah.
And on the west side, for instance, where your property lets up to Michael Costelli's?
Right.
Property, there would be some type of a, or if I was you, there'd be like an eight-foot privacy, it wouldn't be...
Yes, that's correct.
It'd be segmented.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I have no problem with any of that.
Okay.
That's, and like you say, we were planning on doing, it won't be left open, it wouldn't be left open at all, because we do realize there are some different uses, and we're, again, we're neighbors. We need to try and start off on a good foot.
Any other questions, speaker?
Do you have any other, uh, anything you wanna offer in terms of the entryway, the drive-up peel of the front?
Say that one more, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The entry to the unit?
It would be, um, the primary is gonna be off Highland. And I would say we do something that is landscaped, and probably some low signage and, uh, stone brick with some lighting, that kind of thing, is that what you're asking? Yeah, yeah. Again, a lot of it you've seen before in other complexes, something very similar. Something that, that reads well, but is not real ostentatious, you know? No neon signs, no... None of that.
Thank you, sir. Bill, did you want a?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Bill Wostoski, Centerpoint Commercial, and I are here on behalf of Munson Realty. I've represented this property for approximately two years. I, I can tell you that they've had some, some problems with marketing this property. I know the Weisman Group had it before, which was made, one of the major realty groups out of Dallas. They had no luck in approximately two years of, of trying to broker this deal. We've stepped up, and we, we actually had been considering talking to the city about changing the format of what they, they wanted this to be retail. And I, I've been in the retail business on the realty side since nineteen ninety-seven, so almost a quarter century. And it probably should have never been designated as retail from the start, except for maybe the frontage around IHOP and the hotels there, because the access at this site is, is problematic. Uh, especially coming from, if you're coming from northbound, you miss a lot of the site, but at the exit ramp. And for this reason, when Mr. D'Amico approached us, we, we saw into his vision, because we had already been thinking about this for a while. What we think, and, and, uh, I believe it coincides with Mr. D'Amico's plan, is if you provide some critical density here, the front part of this property could possibly develop and be retail, which is gonna help, help generate some tax dollars that are not there at this site right now. Right, right now, it's so difficult to get to, and it's not really a destination yet, that we feel that when this develops into multifamily, we'll have a little bit of a synergy there to be able to see if we can develop some of that front and maybe sell off that. And we've talked to Mr. D'Amico about that. We think that front pad side will eventually go to a restaurant. Possibly another piece of the section directly behind IHOP may go as a restaurant, or some type of retail use. And then when we remainder, we may be able to do a small garden office, dental office, professional office. But right now, there's just not the traffic there. All the traffic stays out on one-twenty and Morton Street, as we see all that is starting to develop very quickly now. All of a sudden, we've, we've kinda had a lull, and now we have another growth spurt there. But for this reason, we would ask for support of this project, because we think this is gonna create some density to be able to make part of this, where it still generates some sales tax and generates a little higher property tax. And then, Mr. D'Amico, from what we've seen, is gonna develop a, a Class A project, and that's what we were looking for, because, you know, there's a little bit of responsibility when you sell, sell something, that you wanna make sure that the neighbors and the area is improved by what, what you're trying to do. That's, that's all I have to add, have any questions for me?
Questions, speaker?
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else here to speak, either in favor or in opposition to this request?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. Could you come to, could you come to the record, please?
I'm not, I didn't do anything to fill out anything to speak...
I need you to name and address for the record, that's all.
Uh, my name's Michelle Sanabia, and I got this letter, and I live on the property behind the Hyde Park Apartments at twenty-eight hundred South Lilis Lane. So I'm not really sure why I got this, 'cause none of my neighbors did, but the lot...
That was the previous case, I think.
Right, I just, um, I just, if there's a chance for any sort of...
We've already, we've already, we've already paid an action on that case, it will go to City Council on the...
No, that, no, sir.
That's a pre-planned, that was planned, yeah, it was planned. So we've already taken action.
Oh, I was just gonna say something for it, but I was just gonna give an observation.
Well, it was a plan that's already been approved, so...
Okay.
Thank you for coming down.
No, I, it's about the other one, or can I know? Yeah, just about the whole thing in general.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
It just is a, it just is a, I mean, you sent this to me, and I really tried to download the minutes from January and look a little bit, but, um, and it's nervous to get up here and talk, 'cause I don't wanna say something stupid. But I'd rather sit down, but that's okay. Stresses me out, but I will tell you that I've lived behind the apartments, I've never heard anything. I've never had a problem, I drive down on, around by the other apartment complex all the time, there's never traffic. I'm out in my backyard every day behind an apartment complex that has a wrought iron thing, and I never hear anything, never have any problems, and, um, I think that growth and development for Dennison is fine. I'm not from here, I'm from California, so you can imagine that this is like, you know, paradise compared to Southern California. So, um, and I'm a veteran, and not that that means anything, but even during the, um, even during that, that power outage, the only traffic I had is because the water pipes broke. So, I mean, I go to the Dennison pool, I've never had to stop for any traffic from the apartment complex, I've never heard anything, I've never had a problem being in close periphery to a multiple dwelling unit, and, um, I just wanted to say thanks for sending this to me and including me, and it looks like, um, you know, everything that everybody is presenting and is doing looks like it's really good for the City of Dennison. So I guess that's in support of all of it, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I, I think, um, well, first of all, I'm gonna close the public hearing now, so we can discuss among the commission, but I really think that I'm in total agreement with, with the staff and, uh, with Bill. I don't see, I don't see this as a good retail location. I don't see, I don't see this as a good retail location. I'm not even, I mean, I, you know, I think the multifamily is, is a good use for it, I think with the answers that the applicant has given us, the prices for, for the rent on the units, I think we're probably gonna wind up with something that's comparable to what we had at Gateway, and what we have on, on Boyd Lake. So I'm personally, I think this is probably a, a good use for this, for this property.
I guess my only concerns are, we've already discussed about the landscaping to make sure that the screening is...
Well, we've still have site plan approval.
And we don't really have...
Yeah, yeah.
And the traffic, the traffic is, same reasons that the retail is a problem, there's gonna be a little bit of, people that are leaving that are, are gonna need to allow a little time to navigate those roads to get where they wanna go. That's just the way it is.
Well, I mean, you've got two points of entry to the access road on, on 75, and, yeah, and I do the cut-through all the time myself, so, but I know what you're talking about. But, I mean, when I asked you on that question, that was to, because right now, it being low, you know, local retail, they can just come in there and build, shop, and we wouldn't even have this discussion for reviews, just being site plan approval, like, and so on that. But I really think that, I don't, I don't see the traffic as being as bad as it could be. Well, it's... Also, it'll be addressed at some point. If it becomes a, an issue, then the city will have to step up and make some kind of changes. Plus, the fact that, I don't remember where I read this the other day, but occupancy rate in Dennison, Texas right now is about 95% on multifamily. I think it's a very good use for this.
It's heated.
Yep. Anybody else? Anything? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion. I move to recommend approval of resounding the subject property to the planning and development zoning district.
Second.
Motion is called in favor. Aye. Oof. No motion carried. And I think we are to item three C, correct?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As referenced in the agenda caption, staff is recommending amendments to two sections of the zoning ordinance. As I noted at the last meeting, we're gonna start taking some tactical approaches to the zoning ordinance to bring it in line with, I believe, today's market conditions. Today, we're looking at two sections, I think, that are really more housekeeping areas. One of them is state law is very specific on how do you provide notice to property owners. For whatever reason, Dennison took the step that we have to send out newspaper notices for the Planning Zoning Commission meeting. State law states that you have to send out property owner notifications to those within 200 feet of the subject zoning change, as we did on the previous case. There is no requirement for a newspaper notification. There is a requirement for newspaper notification for the city council meeting. So by eliminating this unnecessary requirement for the newspaper notification for P&amp;Z meetings, or sometimes we're able to get cases on your docket quicker. Sometimes we have cases come in, depending on how they are slotted in for our application period, we've got this period where we have to have the notice published in the newspaper prior to the 15th day of the P&amp;Z meeting, and sometimes that might create a delay. So again, this is really just a housekeeping measure on, on eliminating that notice. So again, people still get notice in the mail for the P&amp;Z meeting, and then typically at the P&amp;Z meeting, we announce, as you do, when the cases are going to the city council on that.
Do we notify within 200 feet of the property that we're not...
Yes, sir.
Ready to sit?
Yes, sir, that's state law.
Okay, but we don't exceed that? We don't exceed that?
No.
We just do two...
We might, we might, you know, if it's close, we, you know, I don't know. Sometimes we go a little further out. If it, if it looks like a property may be within a few feet, Felicia will probably err on the side of caution and go a little further out just to make sure, you know, we caught people and that.
Okay.
Second thing really is what I think is something that's beneficial to the economic development of the, of the city. We noticed that we do not allow restaurants in our light industrial district, and I can see probably the initial thought was that it was gonna be an area, you know, dedicated for light industrial, commercial warehousing. The issue is, as you know, in the city, we have a lot of vacant light industrial areas that are probably primed for redevelopment on our major thoroughfares. And if there's an opportunity to get a, a restaurant in those areas, we don't want that to be an obstacle. So we're recommending that the restaurants that are either sit-down or drive-through be allowed by right, the, the drive-in restaurants such as Sonic, which have a different type of traffic characteristic, we're recommending that they be allowed through a conditional use permit. Same thing that we had also proposed in our neighborhood service and some of our other districts, where the restaurant, the drive-in are allowed by right, we're asking that they be allowed by, by conditional use permit. But we do believe that some of the vacant areas zone light industrial, they could be ripe for, for revitalization for restaurants. So with that, Mr. Chairman, the city is the applicant on this. Be glad to answer any questions, and let you open the public hearing.
Any questions? Okay. We probably need to, this is a public hearing case, so let's close the public hearing. Let's build to get up and say something.
I guess the media wasn't that interested in my case.
They weren't.
Well, that's deflating. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of proposed amendments to the comprehensive zoning ordinance.
That's it. Have a motion with a second. All in favor? Aye. Oof. None. Motion carries. Is that, we have updates on the council?
Just, just gave you the action for the council in the last meeting. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions on that? Just happy they're doing what we tell them to do. All right. Seeing no other business before the commission, I will entertain a motion adjourned. Well, that here is quick. Man, I got it all.
Before it finished, Josh.
I think Mike had the first, and Spence had the second. All in favor? Aye. We stand adjourned at 10:37 a.m.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mike.
I gotta get it quick. I won't make a motion.